Good evening, everyone. I welcome you to this meeting of the Washington County Board of Education. At this time, I call the meeting to order. We do have all members present and their student representative. We do have a quorum. Member Lynda Murray will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. At this time, we'll have approval of this evening's agenda. Is there a motion to approve?
Mrs. Williams, I move for the approval of the agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Gessford. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Zettmeyer. Any discussion of this evening's agenda?
Madam President, I move to amend the agenda for tonight's meeting to include an additional item under New Business: Consideration Memorandum of Understanding between the Board of Education of Washington County and the Washington County Teachers Association regarding Article 7.7, covering classes of the negotiated agreement.
Thank you, Mr. Bickford. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Stauffer. Any discussion of the amendment? Any questions? Okay, we'll move for a vote on the amendment as read by Mr. Bickford. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Right, we have seven affirmative votes. And the student member concur, so motion carries. So we have an amended agenda following this vote. The approval for the agenda was made by, the motion was made by Mr. Gessford with a second by Dr. Zettmeyer. Any discussion? Any further discussion of the agenda? Okay, then we'll move to the vote. All those in favor? Okay, thank you. We have seven votes. So the agenda for this evening has been approved with the amendment. This time, we'll move to approval of the minutes for the evening.
Mrs. Williams, I move for the approval of the retreat minutes dated Saturday, February the 27th, 2021.
Thank you, Mr. Gessford. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Murray. Any additions or corrections to the minutes of the board retreat held on February 27th, 2021? Okay, we'll move to the vote. All those in favor? We have seven affirmative votes, so motion carries. Those minutes have been approved.
Mrs. Williams, I move for the second approval of the closed session minutes dated Tuesday, March 2nd, 2021.
Thank you. Is there a second to Mr. Gessford's motion?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Murray. Any discussion, any additions or corrections to the minutes of the closed session of March 2nd, 2021? Okay, we'll move to the vote. All those in favor of approval of the closed session minutes? Okay, we have seven affirmative votes. Those minutes are approved.
And I have one final motion for the approval of the business meeting minutes dated Tuesday, March 2nd, 2021.
Thank you, Mr. Gessford. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Zettmeyer. Are there any additions or corrections to the business meeting minutes of March 2nd, 2021? Okay, we'll move to the vote. All those in favor of approval have seven affirmative votes with the student member concurring. Thank you, Mr. Gessford. This time, we'll have public comment. We have one person who has signed up in advance, and that is Mr. Neil Becker, who is WCTA president. Mr. Bickford, you have the timer. Good evening, Mr. Becker.
Good evening, President Williams, board members, Dr. Michael and staff. Thank you for the opportunity to address the board and staff in person this evening as our educators have been engaging with thousands of in-person students. First, I commend Meredith's medical staff and the WCPS staff for their collaborative efforts to vaccinate thousands of WCPS educators, contractors, and coaches to add a layer of safety for educators who've dedicated themselves to their students, both virtually and in person throughout the pandemic. On this date, March 16th, exactly one year ago, students and educators woke up to a new reality. They couldn't go to their school buildings. Educators who had scrambled to grab materials, computers, and iPads on Friday, the 13th, prepared for what turned out to be months of virtual instruction. What was called crisis distance learning transformed into virtual learning and now hybrid or concurrent learning. Educators have risen to the challenge and overcome every obstacle they have faced during the pandemic. Some have dealt with personal battles with COVID-19. They've endured their own losses and supported their students and colleagues when they've experienced losses. My words tonight cannot adequately recognize the commitment and dedication of the educators of Washington County Public Schools. They have sacrificed since March to execute the ever-evolving Return to Learn Plan. While school buildings were closed, and we know they weren't truly closed, they were just closed to the public, our administrators in schools and at CES remained on-call and on-duty supporting students, families, and staff. Before the last school year ended, clerical and maintenance staff returned to their school posts in support of school communities. And in the summer, fall, and spring, ESPs have been on-hand supporting our students, both virtually from schools and in person. And since the last week of March 2020, teachers have answered the call to educate over 20,000 students, virtually, concurrently, and in person. Our community is indebted to the over 3,000 educators who remain committed to student safety and success in the midst of a pandemic. Personally, I'm indebted to my daughter's teachers for their devotion to her and all her classmates. There's an agenda item later this evening that is garnering attention. While the nation is making progress in stemming the COVID tide, I respectfully remind the Board of Education and WCPS leadership that the pandemic is not over. There are COVID-positive cases in our community and our schools daily, as is seen on the WCPS dashboard. None of the students we serve have been vaccinated, and the majority of our community members have not been vaccinated. The virus is still dangerous and deadly and easily transmitted. We must not ignore the science and toss out safety protocols, including distancing, wearing masks, and limiting capacity on buses and in all indoor and some outdoor facilities. For the safety of our students and staff, remain measured in your reopening stages and in any decisions you may make this evening and in the near future. Don't rush to fill schools to capacity, their maximum capacity. Please be mindful of the safety of our students and our educators as you consider what is called the Students in Schools Plan in the agenda in just a few minutes. Don't put students at risk and sacrifice safety for data or data points. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Becker. Mr. Becker is the only person I have who's signed up in advance. Is there anyone else outside? It looks as though they may be here for public comment. At this time, we could have board member response to public comment if there is. Mr. Bickford?
Yeah, I just wanted to thank Mr. Becker for his praise of the Meredith's and WCPS staff. I think we've, I can't say it enough how effectively and efficiently that was run. I give a lot of credit to our superintendent, Dr. Michael, for really pushing hard to make sure our teachers are vaccinated. In our positions here on this school board, we get to talk to board members from other counties throughout Maryland, and many of them still have many teachers that have not been vaccinated. I don't know where Washington County stands, but I have to think we're one of the top counties when it comes to getting our teachers and staff vaccinated. It seems to be getting easier statewide, but I really appreciate the fact that we made teachers a top priority. So thank you. And I just wanted to thank Mr. Becker for calling that out as well.
Thank you, Mr. Bickford. Is there anyone else who'd like to offer comment? We have no old business to conduct, so we'll move right ahead to new business for the evening. Our first item of consideration is this evening's consent agenda with Mr. Scott Bakhtel, Supervisor of Purchasing, presenting. Good evening, Mr. Bakhtel.
Good evening, President Williams, members of the board, Dr. Michael. Tonight, I have four items for your review. The Purchasing Review Committee has reviewed these items, and they are being recommended for approval. And staff is available if you have any additional questions.
Thank you, Mr. Bakhtel. Is there a motion?
Madam President, I move to approve the awards and renewals for Basic Life and AD&amp;D, Long-Term Disability, Supplemental Life, and Supplemental AD&amp;D Program Administration to the standard at a yearly cost of $910,706. Chiller replacement at North Hagerstown High School to Edward Kokarian &amp; Company, Inc., at a cost of $1,831,425. English Learner and Immigrant Professional Development Curriculum and Assessment Development to English Learner Portal LLC at a total cost of $55,850. And laptops, desktop computers, and monitors to CDWG at a total cost of $89,623.63.
Thank you, Mr. Bickford, for the motion. Is there a second?
I second.
Thank you, Mr. Evans. Any questions or any discussion? Mr. Bickford?
Just because it is quite a sizable purchase with the chiller, a $1.8 million purchase, could you explain what the use of it will be, why these sorts of things are so expensive, and where the money comes from?
So the money comes from local CIP and state CIP, and I'll let Jeff take it from there.
And my backup is Mr. Rollins, who's also here in the room. But, you know, the chiller is the unit that provides the cooling to the North Hagerstown High School building. So the current unit is a large chiller that services the entire building. The plan and the design is, I believe, to go with actually a couple of smaller chillers so the building can be zoned. So in the cooling season, especially in the summertime, if we're not using the entire building, we can zone it and turn parts of the building off. This unit that we're currently replacing is an aged unit that's been troublesome with the last number of years. We actually did a rebuild about two and a half years ago to get us to this point where we could get this renovation through the state CIP process to be able to use this state funding. And again, this will get, the cost of it will be 79% covered by state dollars and 21% through state CIP of the actual construction cost.
So this is, CIP being Capital Improvement Plan, and this is an example of when the county gives 21%, the state gives 79%?
Correct, on the eligible construction cost, not on the design and engineering fees, but on the actual, on the actual contract itself.
Got it. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Any other questions for Mr. Bakhtel? Okay, hearing none, we'll move to the vote on Mr. Bickford's motion for approval of this evening's consent agenda. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Okay, we have seven affirmative votes with the student member concurring. Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Bakhtel.
Thank you.
Our next item under consideration is the Washington County Public Schools Return to Learn Plan: Reopen and Accelerate Learning. At this time, I'd like to call on Dr. Michael to provide a review of where the school system is with regard to this plan and the safe and gradual return of students to in-person learning. Dr. Michael?
Okay, thank you, President Williams, board members, and public. Obviously, we've been working on our Return to Learn Plan since COVID struck back a year ago at this point. All counties were required to submit a Return to Learn Plan to the Maryland State Department of Education back in August. Washington County developed a plan with five stages, the best that we could forecast things at that time. Stage one would primarily be with all students at home, all staff potentially at home. Stage two would target specific populations of students that would benefit most from five days a week and needed immediate assistance. Stage three expanded that to additional students. Stage four, which is the stage we're currently in, has all pre-K students that want to return, all kindergarten students that want to return, all first-grade students that want to return, and all second through 12th grade students to be eligible for at least an A-day, B-day format. And that's where we are today. I'm pleased to report this evening that in the coming days, maybe another day or two, we will have 24 of our 25 elementaries will have provided the opportunity for five-day-a-week instruction for all those students so far that have indicated they wanted to return. Currently, we're limiting our bus transportation to 24 students. That's obviously has our students less than six feet apart, and we'll need to consider expanding that at some point. So in some cases, parents need to provide their own transportation to take advantage of that five-day-a-week opportunity. Also, Hancock Middle Senior High School, because of class size and the nature of the school, has been five days a week now for a number of weeks, as well as of today. North Hagerstown High School also has been able to provide an opportunity for students to return five days a week. We continue to look for opportunities to expand. What, one more piece of furniture can we take out of the room? How can we accommodate particularly secondary students? The challenge there often is changing classes. So it works for three of my classes, but it doesn't work for all six of my classes. And we're working on accommodation of that type of thing daily. So far, we've continued to maintain six-foot distancing. As late as last Friday, Dr. Chan indicated six-foot distancing is clearly guidance, and we've tried to maintain that primarily to avoid quarantining students if there's a COVID case or staff if there's a COVID case. I've said, since the beginning of this, we will have COVID cases. We're going to continue to have COVID cases, probably for months and possibly, you know, maybe a year yet to go. I don't know how far that'll go into the future, but we will continue to have COVID cases, and we don't pretend that we won't in Washington County Public Schools. We do, again, we're trying to do that six-foot distancing everywhere except right now on the bus in order to avoid quarantine. So on Friday, Dr. Salmon's repeated her call for three-to-six-foot distancing. That's what she's been saying for months. The World Health Organization, World Health, can't get the right title here probably, has said three feet since the beginning of the pandemic, and the CDC has recommended six feet since the pandemic. So that's where you'll often hear this three-to-six feet. This is a safe distance with masking, with masking. The board voted last board meeting to purchase 2,000 desks, which is also going to help us expand to have more students come back. Often, the furniture we have in the room is restriction. We'll start receiving those desks here in a couple of weeks. We anticipate on the day after the, what I call Easter Monday, it's identified in state code, or that way, we'll start receiving our first shipment, and during that week, each, every other day, we'll receive about 500 or 600 desks. So before the end of that week, we'll have all of our desks, not only here, but actually in place where they're needed. We've ordered about 100 white folding tables to accommodate additional students in the cafeteria, and we've been able to fulfill all of those requests from principals. We've provided seat containers to all the schools to help remove furniture from the classrooms. A lot of credit to our teachers. We've had teachers trade classrooms. My class is bigger or smaller than your classroom, and they've traded classrooms. Just a lot of things have gone on to help accommodate us up to this point. I think from a technology standpoint, what I hear from Dr. Pew, what I hear from Dr. Willow, what I hear from my fellow superintendents, when I describe what we're using for technology, I don't think there's a county that's matching our availability of not only Chromebook or MacBook and Huddle Cam and headsets for students, but headset and speaker for teachers. And that lists, you know, television and whiteboard and all those things, kind of goes on and on. And as I've talked to other superintendents, and again, as I hear from senior staff, I don't think we can be matched in the technology we provided to try to accommodate our teachers as well as our students. So I've been very pleased with that. The board's aware, a couple of board meetings ago, you approved emergency purchase of room conditioners. All those have been installed. One is actually right here behind me. All those have been placed in all of our classrooms, outer offices and areas like that. It's, they're made for 1,000-square-foot areas, so the majority of our classrooms are 1,000 square feet or less, and we're very pleased that we're able to provide those. As mentioned a little bit earlier in the meeting, we have provided vaccinations for over 2,400 employees. At this point, 100% of the employees that have requested a vaccine have received a vaccine, the vast majority of which, probably well over 2,300, not only have received their first dose, but their second dose and two weeks since their second dose. So we're down to the last 100 or so that most recently received the vaccine, you know, need to get their second vaccine or wait their two-week period if they most recently got their second shot. We've spent millions of dollars at this point, I would say a million dollars, between a million and $2 million, on PPE materials, mask, hand sanitizer, Plexiglas face shields. We have all of our clerical desks all walled off now with Plexiglas. As you enter our buildings, you'll see our sanitizer pumps with the WCPS logo as you enter all of our schools. So significant amount of investment in PPE materials. So I'm very pleased to say we're at 14,000 children are back in some form of in-person learning, and it's growing. And from my assessment, you know, because of the hard work of teachers and administrators and ESP staff, cooperation of parents and students, it's been a real success up to this point. I don't, I can't imagine anything else that would accelerate learning more than in-person learning, and I think we've seen that in the few short weeks that we've been back to this point. Our most recent change was just yesterday when we returned to a full day of school. So yesterday was not only kind of our first Monday with maybe losing an hour of sleep, it was also our first Monday where everybody, for students, have returned to a full day of school. So we're excited about that. Going to pick up about 42, 43 hours of instruction for the remainder of the year. And again, the in-classroom learning that's occurring with children back, I must say, is amazing. Had the opportunity, I visited two schools today and two, three schools yesterday to see the children, see how happy our teachers are and things. It just, it really brings joy to your heart to see teachers happy to have students back, and students say they're happy to be back. So with that, that's a little bit of the status where we are today.
Thank you, Dr. Michael.
Mrs. Williams, because of the success that Dr. Michael has just described to, to the audience, I would like to make a motion to fully open the Washington County Public Schools at the beginning of the fourth marking period dated April 6, 2021, to return and allow parents to return and allow parents to choose, along with the child's guardian, to choose to either send their child for in-person instruction five days a week or to engage solely in virtual learning, and that the Washington County Public Schools will continue to follow all safety measures to protect our staff and student population.
Thank you for your motion. Mr. Gessford, is there a second?
I second.
Thank you, Mr. Evans. I'll open the floor for discussion. Mr. Gessford, would you like to speak to the motion?
Yes, Ms. Williams, I would. Thank you. Our superintendent has worked extremely hard over the last 12 months trying to find the best possible ways to keep our students engaged, motivated, and inspired, and yet it has been tough to endure through this horrible pandemic. Reevaluating decisions, reviewing directions, and yet having to motivate staff to stay at the top of their game is among many critics. But yet, he succeeded. Under Dr. Michael's leadership and direction, the senior leadership has provided steps to move forward and towards the goal of reopening. They have provided enough PPE for all staff and students, placed hand sanitizer and sanitizing stations in every classroom and hallway, provided teachers with safety equipment to teach from their school desks. They have added air purifiers to the classrooms, placed plenty of signage for social distancing. Extra staff has been provided for cleaning of the classrooms, face shields, Plexiglas for students' desks, and so much more. We have a communication tool that provides parents the latest information on COVID numbers per school, and contact tracing protocols are in place. Staff began the process of offering COVID vaccinations, not one, not twice, not three times, but recently, a fourth call was placed for any staff. Anyone who comes into the school as a vendor has been provided that opportunity to receive the vaccination. So there is no reason that anyone wanting the safety of receiving a vaccination shot couldn't say, "Dr. Michael and his team hasn't done everything possible to provide another step for making sure all of our staff and students are safe." We do know the long, we do not know the long-term effect on keeping students out of the classroom and what it will have when it comes to socialization, depression, suicide rates, let alone the ramifications of potential earnings for students in the years to come. These are all factors that are being reviewed and debated. Recently, Maryland State Superintendent Karen Salmon in an article was quoted saying "schools are the cleanest and safest places for students to be during the pandemic." The CDC wrote on their website that "opening schools for in-person learning as safely and quickly as possible and keeping them open is important, given the many known and established benefits of in-person learning." I am afraid that we will have some students that now will hate school, that once loved it. Parents are seeing their children falling behind. Children are stressed and depressed. Students are not showing up for online classes, and attending has, attendance has declined. It is time to stop the bleeding. It is time to bring the students back to teach and evaluate how far we have been set back and to let our highly talented staff do what they do best. For that reason, and for the students, and because I believe in our staff, our leadership team, and our superintendent, I will support the opening of our schools with this motion.
Thank you, Mr. Gessford. Anyone else? Yes, Mr. Stauffer?
Let me preface my remarks by saying that for a long time, I've said perhaps half-heartedly, but I don't know when this pandemic's going to really end. I don't know when somebody's going to say it's safe to go back. I don't know if that means when we get everybody vaccinated or what. But distance instruction is definitely not working overall. It works for some students, but not for all. My concern about opening schools is I will defer to staff and Dr. Michael because they work with this on a daily basis. We don't as board members. I don't anyhow. So I have some questions about how this rollout, this transition to a complete return to Stage Five by the beginning of the fourth marking period, how able, are we able to do that? Because to me, the transition must be smooth as can be. There, there can't be a lot of doubt. There can't be a lot of problems that we haven't foreseen. There can't be a lot of problems that we haven't foreseen, because if we mess this up, I think the criticism's going to be really sharp. So I would ask these things of you, Dr. Michael. Transportation, are we able to, we'll start there, are we able to handle that, a transition by fourth marking period to get kids back?
Well, one of the questions we've asked over and over of various officials is information regarding buses. We haven't really gotten clear guidance. So superintendents across the county, we've kind of picked the number 24. It's roughly a 12-seater, 12-row bus, a child per seat, so they're obviously within six feet of each other. So what would happen with transportation? If we needed to provide more transportation than we're currently have room for on any one bus with 24, we'd have to expand our seating beyond 24. We've talked with staff about how that might be managed, so we're thinking we would load the bus back to front, maybe every other seat, and then the next row of children get on would load back to front in the alternating seat. And then ultimately, as you get that 25th student on or more students, you continue back to front. The concept being trying to minimize the amount of time that children are next to each other. So the quarantine rules are if you're within six feet of someone for more cumulatively, more than 15 minutes in any given day, we need to quarantine you if that person happens to have COVID. So a big driving force behind what we've been trying to do is limit our quarantines. So the only place we've recently had quarantines of any substantial nature have been three ball, have been two ball clubs here during winter sports. The team obviously closer than six feet as they're playing and practicing together, and also in the bus. So on occasion, we've had a couple of kids that have had COVID, and we've had to quarantine the four or five kids around them. From what I know, even the children that have been quarantined on the bus that were within six feet have not, have not come down to COVID with it, to our knowledge. So one thing with transportation, we probably would expand from 24 on the bus to more students on the bus. We strategically load them to try to minimize that 15 minutes. A lot of our largest loads are in town and are pretty quick, you know, two, three corner stops and they're on their way to school. So I do think it can be minimized. I do think we would probably catch, you know, a larger number of children in a quarantine situation if somebody were to have COVID.
And how about lunches? Obviously, we just had individual packed meals here this evening, so meals would have to be individually packaged for students. Is that possible on a large basis with 20, you know, thousands and thousands of students back in schools?
We're, we're serving lunch to students in a variety of ways. Some schools, I was in a school today, a number of the children were eating in their classroom. The school actually has almost an aide for every room through Thane Monroe, so it pretty much has pre-K through grade two. And quite a few of the, the children were eating in their room in addition to the cafeteria. We have a lot of schools that have expanded their cafeteria, for instance, Clear Spring High School. If you're familiar with the big orange dot, it's like a famous thing from even when I was there 42 years ago. They've expanded their cafeteria space out into there. I mentioned the purchase of about 100 cafeteria tables. Majority of them are used to expand out into other areas, because often our cafeteria tables are so big, it's difficult to maximize that cafeteria space with six-foot distancing. But we've been able to do that in our cafeterias and by utilizing rooms and moving over into the gymnasium with some, some areas. What we've experienced is different schools have been able to see things different ways, and as we capture good ideas from one school, we share it with another school. I think the best example of that is our elementary. We had about 13, 12, 13 schools that were allowing 100% of the students return, but as good ideas were shared, best practices were shared, creative moving of furniture in classes and addressing the needs of the cafeteria. You know, we're up to now 24 out of 25, and I'm pretty confident we're going to get our 25th school there as well in elementary in the next coming days as we help them think about how they can utilize their space differently. What I've seen as far as getting lunches, they don't have to have packed lunches. Our children are getting hot lunches. We have spaces on the floor. I was in one school, I can't remember now if it was, wasn't it yesterday, so it had to be last week, I think it was Paramount, I mean, they had a system. They had somebody at both entrances of the door. They motioned to the child when they got up to come, to get in line, to get in line, to get in line, and then move to the cafeteria. So again, best practices as we share them, we're keeping the students apart. I think as students transition in a hallway, it's difficult to keep particularly our young students, our crowded hallways six feet apart. But as we've looked at that cumulatively for 15 minutes, is it possible that children are together for 15 minutes in the hallway? And I think generally we can say, you know, that passing in the hallway time is very minimum. You'll see students going down the hallway with their arms out to keep themselves spread out or kind of an airplane wing. It's kind of cute to watch our little kids do that as they're moving down the hallway and transitioning. But schools are learning every day, and again, I want to go back to our ESP team, our teacher team, our administrative team have just, they just keep figuring this thing out, and they've been very, very successful to this point.
And how about sanitizing? You know, especially when you change classes in the middle school and high school, is there, you know, it's going to be difficult to do that, so what's?
I think it's going to depend on how many students returned. I know that teachers have an A-day desk, a B-day desk, or first-period desk, second-period desk, or spraying the first-period desk because the second-period kids are coming in. So there are some creative ways that we're doing that. Some students are actually wiping their own desk down. I was at Hickory yesterday. As the classes exchange, the custodian come in right behind the students, so these are even the same students going to come back and sit in these same seats. The custodian actually wiped down every, every desk in the room. It's just, just one custodian on day shift there, I think, and he must do that as the teacher planning period comes up, moves around like that. So it is going to require, you know, as we have more students back, it'll take more creative thinking of how we continue to sanitize between students.
And how about locker rooms for physical education classes?
I think locker rooms, again, I'm not even exactly sure what we're doing right now. I think the majority of students are changing, but again, we have a limited number of students back. In elementary, we don't change clothes, you know, for that. I might have to defer to Dr. Willow or Dr. Pugh if they could help me out with locker rooms. I know we've talked about it from a sports standpoint. Obviously, the children got to change from their street clothes to their athletic gear and things like that, so we were discussing that today. We need to use the entire locker room and not just like the varsity room and areas like that to keep children scattered out as they change clothes. Again, we'd want them to try to maintain six feet and not be in there more than 15 minutes cumulatively with the same people. Dr. Willow?
And that's, as Dr. Michael shared, that is correct. At the secondary level, many of our PE classes are not actually changing right now. The activities have been modified in some cases, and to Dr. Michael's point, anytime we are using the locker room, whether it be for sports, spring sports possibly, the expectation is, is that we're in there for less than 15 minutes and that we're spread apart appropriately.
And we have plenty of personal protection equipment?
I'd, I'd say at this point, you know, with what we've stockpiled and have on order, and now the world has kind of caught up with that, gowns, masks, caps, booties, full gear. I mean, one thing I think we would do if this motion were to pass, I think I would offer to staff that want to be comfortable that they can continue to remain six feet apart from the students, even if the students end up a little closer. At this point, all of our students in classrooms are six feet apart. I think if the motion passes, it might be necessary in some classrooms to go to five and a half feet or five feet. I know there's been an ongoing debate, three to six feet is what we continue to hear. I'm not the scientist, I'm not the expert on that, but I think what we would pledge to do is always keep children as far apart as we possibly can. If not six, as close to six as we can. Right now, our children are all six feet apart.
And what if the metrics get too high again?
Well, again, I think that would be up to the board based on this motion, but if the metrics were to change drastically, I think the board might be something you'd want to reconsider.
And my final question is, and I apologize for seeming monopolized, but this is a tough decision for me in, in many ways. I see the advantages of going back, but I also, in my own mind, have some problems with going back too. Can, can we successfully pull this off if the motion is voted and approved by the beginning of the fourth marking period? Can we do this as seamless as possibly, as possible?
I think based on the percentage of children that are returning right now, you know, 60, 70% of the children returning, many of them already on an A-day, B-day already. If they have interest in coming, they're already familiar with our protocols and expectations. I think I'd want to continue to push for, is there any stick of furniture left in the room? Have we maximized every room that we have available? Are we being as creative as possible? Again, we've grown from 12, 13 elementaries that could only see how they could do 100% of their students returning, that want to return. When I say 100%, 100% that want to return. So now we're up to 24, and I'm pretty confident we're going to be at 25 here in a couple of days and still have six-foot distancing. I don't think more students are going to come beyond our A-day, B-day until the metrics go down, and at the point the metrics go to three or two, I do think we're going to have a substantial number of people want to return at that point. And at that point, we're going to have to go far less than six feet to accommodate them. But at that point, I would assume, we'd have to assume, you know, the concerns with the virus have improved as we get to lower metrics. But I think right now, we're going to see 60, 70% of the children return. Mr. Stauffer, you know, this, this isn't my decision tonight, but like you, I wrestle with these things. I look to our north, and there's two or three school systems right to our north that have been three feet since the beginning of the school year, the beginning of the school year. What if we've been wrong on this the whole time? Again, this is not my motion. I, I respect the board's decision. One of the things that keeps me up at night, what if we've been wrong on this the whole time? And children could have been here safely, but still COVID would have happened, quarantines would have happened, and we could have had a much more normal year. I was in a school last week, I got to tell you, it broke my heart to see only six, eight kids in the classroom, thinking I was going to see another dozen or so online, and then I went online, I saw two or three children. I don't know where some of our children are. We have probably 400, 500 children. I know we have over 750 that aren't in school right now, but I know many of those schools' children are in proper private schools or getting excellent homeschool instruction, things like that. But I fear there's hundreds, 400, 500 children that are just missing in action since March 13th of last year. I don't know what to do about that. I don't know what to do when I look and I'm expecting, I know the balance of the class is another eight or 10 kids, and they're not online, and they're not in person, and the teacher hasn't seen them maybe except for a couple of times a month. I don't even know whether this motion will change that. I only know that's a serious, serious thing that keeps me up. So I don't know if that helps you any. Again, this, this is a board decision, it's a big decision, but.
I guess my.
As far as this transition, the fact that we've done this with elementary, kind of school by school by school, I'm confident we can make the transition, because the bulk of the kids that are interested in coming right now are already here some of the time. So it's just making that final transition to whatever. Again, to the public, we're six feet apart right now. We would be six feet in every classroom where we can accommodate that, but if all students returned or more students returned than the capacity that we can even figure out any other way, we'd obviously move to five and a half feet or five feet, or, you know, we'll maintain the action.
And I thank my fellow members for indulging me, but this is a, I wrestle with this, this decision. I really do.
Stauffer, we'll all have an opportunity. Mrs. Murray, we'll go to you next.
I'm Dr. Michael. What are the state metrics for COVID right now?
I didn't catch up with everything today. I think things are four. Jeff, I'll defer to Jeff, he probably can pull it up pretty quickly. I mean, we've been consistently, you know, number one as far as high metrics, but then the last couple of days, it seems like we dropped down, you know, sixth, seventh in the batch, and then kind of up and down a little bit.
Yeah, I'd probably have to pull up the state website to take a, to take a look, and to be honest, I haven't done that today. In terms of, you know, if you're thinking about the chart the state put out in terms of case rates and, and positivity rate, the county's positivity rate as of this morning, which is, you know, backdated data, it's yesterday's data, is, I believe it was 5.75, 5.78% as a positivity rate, and the case rate was slightly over 15, I want to say 15.71 today. It's ticked up a little bit in the last couple of days. We had been down in the, in the percentage rate in the threes. Honestly, this is, we're at the highest rate we've seen in about three weeks. Same thing on the case rate. Our case rate had been down around 12, 13 for, for a week or two, and it's, it's just for some odd, you know, abnormality, it's ticked up over the last couple of days.
Well, and, and maybe with the governor's announcement that things could open up a little bit more, people are more being out in the open more freely. I, I'm a little concerned, the fourth marking period starts after spring break, and people like to gather, people like to get together, and yes, all the adults in the buildings are vaccinated or everyone that wanted to be, but the kids aren't and their parents aren't. And so that's where the COVID cases come from, and that's what I'm concerned about. I'm worried about the kids. I'm worried about them, I'm worried about their health, I'm worried about, because we don't know. We don't know how this affects kids. Some kids don't get it at all. Some kids, I've read, get it, and it can be very, very serious. So for me, that is a big issue, and I worry about what could happen if we open it up, more kids on the bus, more kids in the lunchroom, more kids in the classroom.
Thank you, Mrs. Murray. Mr. Evans?
Yeah, and to kind of piggyback off what Mrs. Murray just said, she's definitely not wrong. It's, you, you got to be careful of everyone getting it. It's not something that would necessarily be good for anyone, obviously. It's an illness, it's a virus. But another thing we need to worry about too is, you know, I was reading an article in the New York Post about suicide and depression rates, and it said that, and I'm quoting it here, in March and April of 2020, so this is at the very beginning, we're talking about right now, we're 12 months later, and March and April of 2020, total mental health claims for youngsters ages 13 to 18, as a percentage of all medical claim lines, approximately doubled compared to the two months in 2019, according to the study. So I understand what Mrs. Murray's saying, and she's absolutely right on that, but we also need to provide, and this is why I like that we have that option, the parents, we should leave, I believe we should leave that option up to the parents. We are providing a service that the taxpayers have continued to pay for the past 12 months. I think we need to offer it at the full service if the taxpayers want to be able to, to partake in that. We spoke about what Dr. Salmon has said. You know, the schools are the cleanest and safest places for students to be during the pandemic. You know, when they are leaving, we, Dr. Michael spoke about how, I forgot the numbers you said, how there's many students that they're not in the classroom, they're not on the computer screen. Where are they? What are they doing? You know, we, we don't know. And these are probably kids that, you know, are more than likely, you know, struggling with something that, you know, they, they're given free time, and we know that kids will be kids, and it's a concern. So we need to keep that in mind. And then also, over previous meetings, we've talked about the PPE in schools. We, we just talked about how we spent millions and millions of dollars to get all this stuff. If we're not going to put the kids back in school, then why do we spend these millions of dollars? We could have given it to someone else who was going to spend it and put the kids back in school. And, you know, we also spoke about graduation rates and failing rates in previous meetings. You know, our teachers, to Mr. Becker's point and Mr. Bickford's point, our teachers work way harder to see our graduation rate pretty much stay the same. That number should have significantly increased with how hard they work, and I, I truly appreciate everything they do. Their, their, their work is really, I don't want to say going unnoticed, because I think a lot of people see it, but the numbers aren't showing how hard they're working. You know, these failing rates, and I forget what it is, correct me if I'm wrong, I think you said at some point there's at least, 20% of the kids are failing at least one class. That's, that's not okay. It's not working. And I know that this doesn't really have anything to do with today's motion, but it kind of pigges back on it. For me personally, and I don't have any kids of my own, but for me personally, if I wasn't able to play baseball my senior year of high school, there's no chance I would have ever went to college, and I wouldn't be sitting here today. So we are doing a huge disservice to the kids if we don't give them that option to be back in the classroom, to get the education that they deserve, and to be able to move on and grow in their lives. And I think that right now, if we do this on, for the fourth marking period, this year is already tough. There is, and, and I hate saying. There is, and, and I hate saying this, I hate sounding flippant like this, but unfortunately, I think there's an awful lot of kids that may have given up on this year. If we could get them back in school now, we're preparing them at least for what they can do next year as well. This is, I think this is one of the most important things that we need to do, and to me personally, obviously, y'all know where I'm voting on this now, but to me, I feel as though this is an obligation that the board needs to do for our community. I understand, and I was actually speaking with a teacher about this last night, he had some extremely legitimate concerns about allowing the schools to come back in. And I hated when he said that, you know, I hated when he said that, "Well, I'm just going to roll with the punches, we've been doing it all year." I can't stand that our teachers have to do that. They work harder than that, and it's, it's not fair. But at the same time, we also have to think about the fairness to our kids and to our community, and no matter what, nothing that we choose is going to be ideal unless everything is gone and we could go back to 2019 and everything is, you know, hunky-dory again. But this is something that, again, I feel is absolutely necessary, and I don't see how we could go and, and put this off any longer. The three weeks at least that were given, the school board, or the staff members to go and do this, you guys have done a phenomenal job. Dr. Michael spoke about all of the stuff that we have done to prepare for this, and Mr. Staffer, you have given some very good, valid questions that I feel as though he was able to answer perfectly, and show that we have a very good plan to make this happen. And like you said, it's not going to be perfect. It's nev, it's not going to be perfect. I mean, the, the regular flu has been around for 103 years. It's, it's going to be here, if not now, when?
Thank you, Mr. Evans.
In addition to what Mr. Evans has already said, being back in school the fourth quarter would allow us to assess students to know how we can catch them up during the summer. I mean, it, it allows us to have hands-on, who knows what, how they know it, and what, where do we go from here to close the gap?
Thank you, Dr. Zedmeyer. Mr. Buchum?
Looking at, we're currently in stage four. We've been seeing our students attend in the A-Day, B-Day schedule here. And schools are, like North High, Dr. Michael mentioned earlier, are, gave every A-Day and B-Day student an option to return 100%. And I believe we should move in that direction, rather than immediately putting every single student back in stage five. We should see each school, as new regulations come out, with new CDC data, because if we look right now, even in A-Day, B-Day schedules, there are schools, schools in South High, schools throughout the county, which currently have already 12 people in class, A-Day, B-Day. And those school, those school rooms, those classrooms, they just don't have no space with everyone to be separated six feet apart. So are you going to start putting students back in the auditoriums, or what's going to happen with that? I really do believe that as more data comes out, right now, we're in a period of uncertainty. There's so much that is uncertain about this virus. And just a month ago, we invited every single student back to an A-Day, B-Day schedule, hybrid. I do believe if we vote right now for this motion, we are going in a haste and rapid situation. I appreciate everything Dr. Michael and his staff has done to provide PPE, and those PPE supplies are being used right now in an A-Day, B-Day schedule. But I do believe that we should wait on the superintendent and staff to receive their opinions and to get more information, so that we can incorporate those into recommendations, and see how we can get more students, the option to return, whether it be A-Day or B-Day, to return 100%. We should leave the decision up to the parents and to the students in communication, rather than forcing every single student to choose an ultimatum. And I truly do believe that with the PPE, with everything, and as more data, more science comes out, we will make a much more sound decision. So I personally do believe that we should vote for this motion today, and instead look in the future to see, how can we incorporate more students back in person? How can we allure more students? And what supports can we use? So, Mr. Evans mentioned that students are facing depression, suicide rates are up. Yes, and I, and we all see that. But our guidance counselors, our psychologists in schools, our social workers, they're working very hard with these students, and very hard with students all around to, to try to help them. And I know personally, I've experienced the anxiety that comes with living in pandemic, being a student. And I know that going back to school was the decision that I made. Currently, I'm a North High student, I am a C-Day student, going back 100% days in a week, Monday through Friday, I chose that decision for myself. But I do not believe that we should force every single student to make that decision. We should leave it up to them to decide. And each day, more and more, I see new, new students' faces pop up into my classroom, because they're deciding, and they're learning, they're making that decision to come back on their own accord. And right now, I just don't believe this is the time. I truly appreciate, and Mr. Guesford is such a wonderful person, he really has the interests of the kids out there. But right now, there's so much uncertainty with this virus, so much uncertainty, you know, PPE supplies, everything, we're abusing them right now. But with the six-feet restrictions, busing, everything, as this is Dr. Michael mentioned, we really need to take some time. And look, I truly do not believe that we can go back to stage five at the start of the fourth marking period. We must take a much more cautious approach. And only just a month ago, like I repeated, sorry to say this earlier, but we just entered stage four. Going to stage five now is too soon. And I urge the board to vote to, I urge the board to vote no to this motion by Mr. Guesford. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Buchum.
Can I say one more thing?
We'll let everyone have an opportunity to speak, and then we'll come back for a second round, if that's okay with you. Mr. Evans? Mr. Bickford, did I see your hand?
Yeah, just a couple of questions. So, in the spirit of your motion, Mike, and as you understand it, Dr. Michael, would students who want to remain A-B, would they have to come back every day?
I think I'm hearing the motion that we'd have encouraged students to come back five days a week, if that's the parent's decision or student's decision, or be 100% virtual. I mean, it is challenging for teachers, and I see it both ways. A, B kids, five-day-a-week kids, and virtual kids. And then some kids, you know, we're moving and changing all the time. Some of the kids are changing what they're doing, some of the parents are changing what they're doing, and some of them were changing what they're doing. So I think it's cleaner for staff if they're actually back five days a week, if we can do that safely, rather than A and B Day. If you're willing to come A and B Day and be safe, I think you'll be safe with the five-day week. I think it'll make it better for staff. I think the parent choice part of the motion, as I understand it, the parents choosing, the parents voting, you know, with their, with their choice whether to send their child or not send their child. And in some cases, right now, we don't have that option, because we don't have the room and a waiting list, or whatever. Again, it's just hard for me to think, my two grandsons are in school, they're less than three feet apart, been there since September. You know, it's worked out okay. They've had, Ben has been quarantined once, and the middle school closed for a couple of weeks. But other than that, they've been there every day, and pretty much with the exception of Wednesdays, when they have their asynchronous day, which they pretty much finish their work about nine o'clock in the morning. You know, they've had a pretty normal year. What if we could have? So, I don't know. I just really don't want to guide the board one way or the other. My job would be to keep our kids six feet apart, keep masks, maintain social distancing. But where we can't do six feet, we would do as far a distance as we possibly can. I would never say automatically three feet, put your furniture back in the room, let's go to three feet. If this was the will of the board, can we get away with six? Let's stay with six. You know, I've told people if you can get seven or eight, because your class is that small, spread the kids out as far as you can. But next step would be five and a half feet, five feet, four and a half feet. I think we would, I think we're going to see our quarantine numbers increase, it's simply because we're inside that six-foot circle. But I don't know, I have no way of knowing that our COVID cases will increase. A lot of our COVID cases where we're seeing related, our brothers, sisters, we had three cousins, you know, they're all palling around together, and they all got sick together. They were all three in three different classes, and no one else so far has come down with COVID. So it's just difficult to say what's, what's going to happen. I just can't, I can't really advise the board in a perfect way. I think parents would have to make up their own mind. I think for a teacher, I think it'll be easier for teachers to have kids in the room, and parents have chosen to be online or online. I do think if the numbers go down, we're going to have a lot of requests to have kids come back. But then I think at that point, we also will see the CDC change to some other number.
That was, that was my next question, is, depending on the vote tonight, you'd have three weeks to prepare for this. But even if it didn't pass tonight, what would change in the next three weeks that would make you move to this next level, even without this vote?
I mean, I would probably recommend to the board that we take this step if I saw our numbers continue to come down and stabilize. Like I say, we got down into the fours, and we just kind of got stuck. I told people back in January, I predicted we'd get down between seven and eight, and we'd just stop. It wouldn't go down anymore. And because COVID's going to be here until things kind of get cleaned up. I'm pleased to see it came down in the fours, now we're back up to five. But I think we get down to, you know, something like that again, I mean, it's going to be really hard to say we can't be back. Really hard to say we can't be back. But I don't even know if that's a scientific number. I think the other thing I've noticed about the testing and the cases, I mean, they were testing, somebody tell me, I don't really know, 500, 600 people a day, long lines, hours of waiting, and now they're testing, I, some of the la, it's been a week or so ago that I looked, it was 70, 80 people a day. So that really plays with these numbers as well. I can't do the math, I've tried, I can't figure out how they're doing the math, but it's, is consistent from week to week, month to month. I don't know. When I'm out now, people are out. Everybody's busy, traffic's busy. I think people, some people just, I don't know if the governor had much choice but to say we're going to open up, because I think people are going to open up without him. Does that make it safe to return to school? I don't know. I just don't know.
And I know Stan sort of asked this, I'm still not quite clear. So, we pass this, let's say we pass this tonight, and it goes into effect after spring break. At what point, under the current rules, are you, especially when it comes to school buses, if a kid, if we know that a kid on a school bus, if we pass this tonight, gets sick, are you going to have to quarantine all those kids on that bus, under the current rules?
If it's one student, we would look at how many students are within six feet of that student. All the students will still have to be masked. You could go to double masking, it doesn't really, there's no rule that says double masking. You get to not quarantine people. It would just, it's going to mean more quarantines if there are more kids in close proximity. Right now, Jeff, we quarantine three or four. I mean, you'd almost have to be in that backseat in the corner, that would only be three. So generally, on a bus issue, which we've only had a couple, it's been three or four or five?
Generally speaking, so, you know, we've measured out the bus seat, and we spent time out on the bus, tape measuring everything. It is typically a six-feet window from the infected student, is on the same side of the bus, the same side of the aisle, two seats in front, two seats in back, and then across the aisle, it's directly across, and one seat diagonally. That's the six-foot halo for a student on the bus. So if you're, as we are today, with a capacity, let's say, of 24 on the bus, you could potentially quarantine as many as seven if the bus has, is full complement of 24 individuals. If you've got more students coming, and you've got more students on the bus, that number's going to, going to rise.
To be clear, we've, we've been less than six feet on the bus ever since we've come back.
But right now, if a kid was sick, you'd still quarantine the seven kids around them?
And maybe, for clarification, we also look at the six-feet, 15-minute rule in 24 hours. So for instance, if the student sitting directly in front of the infected student is only on that bus for four or five minutes in the morning, and again in the afternoon, then that student wouldn't need to be quarantined, because they haven't met the 15-minute rule.
Okay.
So, it's looking at the video is a bit of a science, you know, identifying who the students are, you know, matching up to the seating chart, and then looking at time on the camera, how long have they been near each other, to determine if we've met the 15-minute rule.
And that's where I think we would have to more strategically load, I, this is all top of my head, back to front, alternating seats, back to front, filling in seats, back to front, filling in one more seat, back to front, filling in two to a seat. I mean, at that point, you could be 48 on a bus. You would increase your quarantines probably to 10 or so, you know, if you, if you had a case. Again, we're less than six feet on buses right now. Bus capacity, we do have enough buses, we believe, to transport all the students if they wanted to return five days a week, even with our bus driver shortage, because of combined routes, and because we're only transporting 60, 70% of our students over what we traditionally transport.
And my final question is, you know, we do have parents, obviously, that email us that have been pushing very hard to have their kids back every day. Have we made accommodations in certain schools that even are A and B? If a parent really, truly is asking for their child to be back on a full schedule, are we able to do that?
I would say the majority of our students are back, I'm not sure how long our waiting list is. Again, elementaries where we've had the greatest amount of success, going school by school by school, and resolving challenges. I even heard what you said about Salem Avenue, I've got ideas for them, how they can easily address more children in their cafeteria. They would have to move one person, and they could, I think the way this design of that school is, I don't want to say on the air, because I don't want to panic anybody, but I think they could even with the same staff they have, and they wouldn't even leave the room, accommodate more children there. I'm sorry, Mr. Bickford, I lost your question there for a second, if you could help me out.
No problem. I kind of lost it too, but...
Well, I think accommodating parents is they want to come back.
Yeah, yeah.
So, I don't know how long our waiting list is. I think as we could go to each middle school, because the rule is, that we're thinking, you know, for Kevin, Kevin's a big man, you know, we're thinking shoulders, shoulders, six feet, but the rule is center of mouth to center of mouth. Center of mouth to center of mouth doesn't change whether you're a little child or a big man like Kevin. So I think we have people that have desks six feet apart, not necessarily center of desk to center of desk. I think we have people that have been reluctant to move certain pieces of furniture, you know, because they prefer not to, or maybe up to this point, they haven't had to. So I think we could continue to look at that. I think we can expand more right now, even with the six-foot rule in some schools. But it may or may not in secondary, again, because the child's changing classes, you might eventually hit that one class, that seems like almost everybody wanted to come back, and suddenly there's 25 trying to get in one classroom. That'd be challenging. 17, 18 is pretty possible with the majority of our classes, pretty easily, with six-foot distancing. You do have to be all the way to the back, you have to be all the way to the sides, you have to be pretty close to the front, you obviously can't block the door, and there can't be a lot of excessive furniture in the classroom. We do have a couple of schools, just by the way they're designed, some of the open schools, they have gigantic open spaces and tiny perimeter classrooms. We have some open schools have gigantic open classrooms and gigantic perimeter classrooms. So it's a little, little hard in some of those rooms. You hit that room that really only, you know, 14 or 15 fit, what do I do with 25? Could I figure it out for one period, what do I do for 25? Maybe, maybe not, I don't know. For six-foot distancing. So I say, I would not want to promise the community, we'd want to make it clear to the community, you know, with this motion, we would do everything possible to maintain six-foot distancing, we would continue with our creativity with six-foot distancing, go to all extents to do six-foot distancing, because that makes less quarantine on our part, and for the parents. But where it's not possible, it would be less than six feet.
And you said, you mentioned Dr. Chan. Dr. Chan is the head of the State Health Department?
Yes.
And she's still pushing for six feet?
Well, up until this week, she's always said six feet, almost as if it's a rule. This week, she said six feet is guidance. The superintendent's continuing to ask her, we cannot get back to school, or the majority of school systems can't come back to school at six feet, even in the fall, if six feet is going to be the rule. And clearly, this Friday, she said guidance, and immediately behind Dr. Chan, while she was still in the line, Dr. Salmon spoke up, as she has many times, three to six feet.
Okay, thank you.
I'm just repeating what I've heard.
Mr. Evans, I know you want to speak again, but I'd like to take my turn, and then we'll come right back to you. So, Dr. Michael, it's been through your leadership that we've been able to get to this place we are today, a safe and gradual reopening of our schools. We went to stage four, we began stage four yesterday.
Stage four began on February 16th.
February 16th, so...
Yesterday was our full day of school.
Full day of school. So gradually and safely, we've been able to get to this point. So you have said several times, this... So you have said several times this evening that it's the board's decision to make on how to vote this evening and that you didn't want to influence the decision one way or the other. So what I would like to ask you is what did you foresee as a possible target date or the conditions that needed to be met in order to do what it is that we're considering doing this evening?
That's really difficult to say because I've been anticipating, I still think we're going to see the CDC change to three feet. And I think it'll happen before April 6th. But it might not, it might not at all, it might not change at all. Because I think they're really starting to rassle over these new reports that three feet and six feet, they don't have any evidence that's made a difference. I think if I heard more science about that, I would probably be encouraging the board to change, you know, to, we continue to move forward at the direction that I've been providing. If the CDC changed to three feet or five feet or four feet, I would continue to move forward. I think we're lower in metrics than I thought we'd ever be at this point. On January 2nd, we were like 19%, Jeff, and 103 cases per 100,000. I didn't see any way we were going to turn the corner and get down onto fours and fives by this point, but I'm glad that we're here. I mean, the other thing about our bus ride I didn't mention, you know, again, we're just starting to brainstorm this. I haven't gotten with Brian Johnson or Jeff and those. We're riding right now with our roof hatch open, even though it's cold. I mean, as we enter warm weather by April, we'll probably have every, every window cracked a little bit. And, you know, cold day, we'll run the heater wide open. And warm days, we'll have the bus windows all the way down as we traditionally do. So I mean, really, you're going to have a great deal of outside air. So, you know, those kinds of things, warmer weather would influence that. I mean, people have said to me, at what point would it be too late to bring children back? For me, I don't know if there is a too late point. I'd rather have them for a month than not have them at all every day. But I do know that constant changing for teachers is challenging. So one upside to this would be, it would probably pretty much be our final change for teachers to levels, virtual, five days in person. I do think if the numbers come down, more kids are going to want to come back. And if the numbers go up, more kids are going to want to go out on virtual. So I don't think I can completely answer your question. I think three weeks from now, I think if things have really gone in the wrong direction and the board makes this decision tonight in the affirmative, they could always change it. They could even call a meeting and change it prior to that date. If you don't make that decision tonight, you could make it another night or never. I can't really answer your question.
No, you did, you did.
We have continually.
And I appreciate that. And I think it's important that you pointed out that this decision, should we vote in the affirmative to approve the motion, that it's not irreversible, that there's nothing that says that we can't come back and reconsider that.
I've said, every day is a new day with, with, with COVID.
Exactly.
And I think we'd be wise to visit anything that we might have to change.
Thank you. Mr. Evans, to you.
Yeah, I just wanted to reiterate that this is not a return to stage five. The, and Mr. Beckford, you're one of many people I've heard use that, that terminology. This is not stage five. We're giving everyone, it's more of a, to give it an unofficial name, modified stage four. And I, I wonder if there was just maybe speculation that we were going to, because of what was on the agenda, that we were going to go back to stage five. I agree 100% with everything you said. I just, like I said, I just wanted to reiterate, this is not stage five. It is a more of a modified stage four.
Anyone else? Mr. Gessford?
Circling back.
What was that? I missed that.
Circling back.
Circling back.
Sorry.
Round two, round two, please.
Just to Stan's comment, I don't think anything's ever going to be perfect. It's not. We, we can plan. I think our leadership team and, and Dr. Michaels have done everything they possibly can. You know, it just, it's not going to be perfect. I know there was an email today from a principal. I don't know if you know which one I'm talking about. She visited a classroom and she saw a teacher crying. And she went up to the teacher and said, you know, what's wrong? And she said, I am just so happy to have my kids back. I think, you know, a lot of teachers are like that. And you know what? I think there's a lot of parents that want that. And again, to Mr. Beckford, you know, we want to give, this motion addresses the parent's ability, the guardian's ability to make that choice for their family. So no one is making anybody go back that doesn't want to. But there are so many students that are walking around Hagerstown that are basically lost. And we don't, we don't need them walking around any longer. If we can get them back into the classroom and evaluate, teach and evaluate, see where they are, it's a start. And we know that we've got an uphill battle for years to come, you know? We just got to get it started. And I don't want anyone to think that I'm not for the students and the safety, because I really am. I'm for teachers. I've got teachers in my family, you know, and maybe they agree, maybe they don't. But sometimes leaders have to make decisions. You know, it's, it's hard for Dr. Michael to sit here and make that decision. And that's why we get elected, because we're the people, we're the individuals that the people elect to make hard decisions for them. We all have, you know, ground that we have, you know, seen what they've said. We just have to follow our gut. I just got to, you know, say, you know, North High, I was kind of shocked to hear that, how many people they have, students they have back in the classroom. And I did hear that, you know, they're very inventive of ways of getting these students back. And the lunch, you know, they, they pre-bag everything and put it on a bag and set it on the table for the kids to come just pick it up. There's no contact. You know, they're doing everything they possibly can to make this happen for, for the students, you know? And that's, that's a cafeteria worker. So, you know, everyone's trying to do their best to get, you know, us into a position to get the students back. And again, I would leave this, you know, I know this, this three foot thing, you know? If, if the state superintendent says, just do the best you can. I think that's something that we have. And it's what she said. She said, you know, if it's not six foot, do the best you can. And I think that's what I'm hearing Dr. Michael saying. They will do the best they can. Waynesboro, they, they've been back. They have had three feet. They've made it work, you know? I think we can, we are capable of doing that too. So I hope that, you know, we can get this corrected and get moving in the right direction, get the kids back. And if we have to take a step back because the, the numbers are high, that's, we can do that. We can do that. But we, we've got to take our, our best step forward and move our school system in the right direction.
Thank you, Mr. Gessford. Mr. Beckford?
Mr. Gessford, I apologize for saying stage five, but I just want to break down this further for everyone. So what, you know, your motion is doing, or if it were to be passed, it will have students have the option to choose between doing fully virtual or fully in person and five days a week, correct? Yep. And then so that will eliminate A day and B day schedules. And I, like something I'm just concerned about is like eliminating those, those A day and B day schedules. Because I know so many students who, who might feel comfortable going in, maybe like two or three days a week and then want to do virtual for the rest, having the combination. I feel like through this motion, you might be taking away the opportunity from a student and forcing them to go back to virtual if they don't feel fully comfortable enough. And I know I'm, I'm one for compromise. And I truly see the merits of this motion and how much benefit it can do for our children, getting them back to in-person schooling or giving them the option to go back five days a week. But looking at the current distancing recommendations, and with that six feet, it's going to be very, very hard to do. And I feel like if you say like, doing our best or going into trying, doing our best. When there's rules, we should probably follow them. And we should follow them. Currently CDC recommending six feet. And if that recommendation changes, we can have more children back to the schools. Then we should pursue with your motion at a later time, in my opinion. But what I do believe right now is that we need to take compromise and look at the merits of both of these situations. And Dr. Michael mentioned, schools, different schools are opening up the option for more students to come back, maybe in like a five day a week schedule. Dr. Michael was mentioning schools and students who've been doing that. So I do believe, right now, as we start moving our furniture, as we continue going on that path, we should still have that A day and B day schedule in place for those students, for students to choose. But also keep increasing, keep putting more opportunities for students to be, for students to have the option to attend five days a week. Through, through looking at ways, intuitive ways that we can increase class spacing. Because you, we're talking about North High. North High gives A and B day students options to come back full time on a C schedule. And you mentioned of the lunch system. North High is a pretty big school, one of the, arguably probably the biggest in the county, right? In terms of like square footage. And even with like the cafeteria, and they have four different lunch shifts. Some students are starting to go into the gym to eat lunch. And I still believe that, and that's still on like a, that's on this schedule. We should have more opportunities for students to keep going in on a five day a week basis. But we shouldn't make the ultimatum that each student should either choose five days a week virtual, five days a week in person. We should still have the opportunity and we should increase more opportunities for more students gradually and safely, like Dr. Michael has been doing, to allow students to come back in and still follow recommendations. And as soon as that, as soon as the CDC gives adequate data and evidence that supports lowering distancing limit, that would mean more students could be in the classroom at a time. And then we should pursue to, to that ultimatum decision or even go straight into stage five possibly. But really, we should weigh on more empirical and qualitative evidence to make this decision wholeheartedly. That's what I do believe. And I just want to speak, Mr. Gessford, I've had the opportunity to listen to you and to work with you so many times. You really do have a heart for so many students, so many staff members, all the community. I do believe with this ultimatum decision, it's not truly the best course to take. And it's the best idea and it's the best feeling that you have. It's your best decision. I do believe if you look at, if you're looking at the data, we're looking at science. We can't really just wing it. We have to go and follow the, the data. And I just want to thank you. That's some of my comments.
Thank you, Mr. Beckford.
Question, I'm sorry.
No, sorry.
So, aren't we currently operating under the, the decision we made back in the fall to turn over responsibility for reopening schools to Dr. Michael? So aren't we currently operating under that principle where if conditions change and Dr. Michael wants to reopen schools, like let's say the CDC does in the next three weeks, go down to three feet, doesn't he have that authority? Or would you be coming back to the board for us to make that decision again?
I think based on the, based on the current, our last decision probably back in September or so, I think you did grant me that authority, yes. And that's how we've been operating, I mean, and I, you know.
Then I, I'll just, I'll just say, I'm, I'm going to be a no vote on this. I very much appreciate Mr. Gessford and Mr. Evans' work and the spirit of why they're requesting it. To me, it feels like we would be overriding our superintendent. I have ultimate faith that he is doing things safely, but ultimately wants kids back. I know that teachers want kids back. My wife calls them roomies and zoomies. They want to have more roomies. But I, like, like our student member says, my concern is that if it feels like we're crowding classrooms and there's going to be more disruptions from having to quarantine more kids based on current protocols, my, my concern is that more parents will opt to keep their kids home virtually. And right now, I think they've just gotten used to this A B schedule. And I'm also very concerned about how we transport kids on buses without causing, you know, what you said earlier, if seven kids have to be quarantined and if we start crowding buses, where even more kids are going to be quarantined, we're going to have more kids back home behind computer screens that could be in school. So that's why I'm going to vote no on this.
Thank you, Mr. Beckford. Mr. Stauffer?
I want to make sure I understood something you said tonight. My hearing's not that great and with the mask on, it's more difficult for me to hear. But it was my experience as a teacher that I had at least 20 some students, between usually around 25, give or take, students in a classroom. Did I hear you say correctly that with the social distancing guideline, it would be about 18 to a classroom? Or did I misunderstand that?
I think with six foot, I think, you know, what we're seeing, 16, 17, 18 in a normal sized classroom. In small classrooms, you can't get that many. And we have kindergartens of 23, 24, 25 kids that are back in person and they're six feet apart. But they're also in schools that have very large classrooms. I think if 30, 30% of students don't come back, 30% of 25, somebody had to come to me real, real quick with the math, it's seven or eight kids. So you're going to be back down in that 17, 18 range if only 70% of our students return. Right now, we can anticipate that our students that return would be an A day, B day child. A child that's home right now fully virtual is not instantly going to jump into five days. I think it's most likely our A B and five day a week killed children right now. So I think to your point about smooth transition, I think already we know the most it would be, would be our A B kids plus our five day a week kids right now, unless the metrics dramatically dropped. And if they dramatically dropped, I think we need to make a decision to, you know, allow more children to return anyhow.
Well, what's, what's the average class size, let's say, off the top of your head, if you know, South High, which is the biggest school in the county, as far as I know?
I'd say 24, average class size.
And if I remember, the classrooms that I was in were fairly large.
Williamsburg classrooms are fairly large, yep. They wouldn't have any trouble with 17 in those rooms if you went back wall, sidewall, sidewall, as close to the front as necessary.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Mr. Beckford, I appreciate your remarks. And I'd like to say that I have no interest in overriding our superintendent. As I said earlier, I think it's through his leadership that we are where we are. And from what I understand, we are in much better shape in terms of getting our kids back to in-person learning than many counties in the state of Maryland. And I think we have that to be grateful for. I know that you've heard us this evening. You, you've heard the questions, you've heard the concerns. And I know that you want students returned to in-person learning when it is the time to do so. So I feel if this were the time for us to do as the motion is saying we should do, that that's what you would have led us to. And so my vote will be no this evening. And I trust that when it is time to return to the schedule that Mr. Gessford is proposing, that you will make us aware of that. So that's, that's where I am this evening. Anyone else? So are we ready to move to the vote then? All right, so we're voting on Mr. Gessford's motion. All those in favor the motion? Two, three, three affirmative votes. Those opposed? Great, we have four votes. Pardon me? Certainly, we have, would you like to do that during comments, the end of the evening?
I can do that.
All right, so we have four votes in opposition and the student member, or the student representative, excuse me. The student representative is in opposition as well, is that correct?
Correct.
Thank you. So the motion fails. Item three, under new business, is the consideration of a memorandum of understanding between the Washington County Board of Education and the Washington County Teachers Association.
President Williams, I move to approve the memorandum of understanding with the Board of Education of Washington County and the WCTA regarding Article 17. of Education of Washington County and the WCTA regarding Article 7.7 covering classes in the negotiated agreement. Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Murray, for your motion. Thank you, Dr. Zettmeyer, for your second. Is there any discussion, any questions about the memorandum? No? All right, then we'll move to the vote. We're moving to approve the MOU with the Board of Education of Washington County and the Washington County Teachers Association regarding Article 7.7 covering classes in the negotiated agreement. All those in favor? All right, we have a unanimous vote. Motion carries. Okay, we'll move to the superintendent's report. Seems as though you've been giving a report all evening, doesn't?
That's okay. Thank you, Mrs. Williams, board members. Tonight, I'm going to invite Micah Sox, our supervisor of visual arts, visual and performing arts, up to the table, as well as Matt Wilson, our curriculum specialist for the visual arts. Very exciting, this month is Music in Our Schools Month, as well as National Youth Art Month. Very, very proud of our art classes, our instrumental music classes, our vocal music classes, the whole variety from pre-K through 12, the accomplishments they've had. We have some students we want to recognize tonight for their accomplishments, for all-state recognition. But even with the pandemic, we've been very, very creative in how students are wearing masks and playing instruments and singing and demonstrating their art talents. I was at Ruth A. Monroe today in the art room and the students were just, just rocking it with, uh, second grade art. And, uh, I was very, very pleased to see, and we so much value the arts here in Washington County. So with that, Micah Sox, Mr. Sox, I'd like to turn it over to you. And if you have a few comments, and I believe we have a video, we're going to queue up here for the board. And then when you're finished, we'll turn it over to Mr. Wilson, that'd be great.
Thank you. Good evening, Dr. Michael, President Williams, and members of the board. Tonight, we'd like to recognize March as National Music in Our Schools Month by honoring our Maryland all-state musicians. Students in grades seven through nine can audition for the junior ensembles, and musicians in grades 10 through 12 are eligible for the senior ensembles. While there's not a live in-person event this year, we do want to take the time and recognize these students on their outstanding achievement. For the junior band, Amber Evans from Barbara Ingram School for the Arts. And the senior band, Candace Lyle, Barbara Ingram School. Emily Elmore from Clear Spring High School. And Emily gets a special recognition. Students after all-state can then move on to, uh, other larger regional ensembles. And, uh, she was selected to the Eastern Region Ensemble, uh, which is fantastic. So special congratulations to Emily. Evan Turner from Williamsport High School. Our junior chorus is made up of members, uh, from Barbara Ingram School. Mitchell Parmley, Kendall Whittington, Naima Gillespie, Andrew Halverson. Our senior chorus is also made up of members from Barbara Ingram School. Alexis Franklin, Paris Grant, Hannah Miller, Isabel Ignatowski, Madeline Ortiz, Caleb Aldridge. Caleb also gets special recognition. Caleb was selected to the All-National Choir for the third consecutive year in a row. Quite an accomplishment. And Ryan Zwitrockowski from Barbara Ingram School. We also had two students, uh, make senior orchestra this year. Kevin Mitchell from the Barbara Ingram School and Yifan Zhang from North Hagerstown High These students auditioned against thousands of, among thousands of students across the state. And I just want to take a moment and thank the teachers who helped prepare them, um, and all the students who auditioned. Uh, I want to thank all of our visual and performing arts teaching staff. They've worked so hard to reimagine ways that, uh, students can perform and the opportunities that we provide them.
I have a question.
And to that point, we have a video to share. I know many of you may be familiar with our annual showcase of marching bands. And one of the great moments at the end of the showcase of bands, we invite all the bands to come back on the field together and they play a piece together. Um, and we know that music has the, that power to unite us and bring us together, uh, even in times when we've, uh, had needed to be apart. So this is a project our high school marching band directors dreamed up. Uh, I want to thank them, as well as, uh, Mr. Scott Benford mixed the audio and Mr. John Slick for compiling the videos for us. Uh, Mr. Benford from South Hagerstown High School would have been the host band director this year. Uh, so at this time, we'd like to share Salute to Freedom from our WCPS mass band.
Mr. Sox, please thank all of our directors and all of our students. Board members, we normally would have our students come in and we, we congratulate them. Uh, obviously, tend to showcase the bands and things. It's been a very unusual year, but I've had the opportunity to see quite a few concerts and things, and our staff and students have just done an amazing job. I know a couple of people had some questions, Mrs. Williams.
Having been in the high school band back when Fred Flintstone was still around, uh, I can't imagine doing that on a Zoom call or whatever it was, and playing just your part, because not everybody's, correct me if I'm wrong, not everybody's playing a melody, right?
Correct.
And so forth. And you couldn't detect a lot of bad notes or anything. I mean, to me, that's amazing.
It's a testament to our teachers, they work, uh, so hard to rehearse those parts. A lot more individual, uh, rehearsing right now than forced than large group where we've been previously. Um, and students, uh, have a, a click track. Uh, you'll notice some maybe had a headphone in and they're, that helps us align all the parts together than to compile the videos.
Yeah, okay. And Mike, I was just wondering if, um, the all-state and all-eastern, will they be doing something similar since they can't be in person, correct?
Um, all-state is not, all-eastern is, uh, doing a virtual ensemble.
Got it, wonderful, thank you.
Mr. Bickham?
I just wanted to again give, uh, congratulations to all these amazing students, and that video was phenomenal. I cannot imagine how many hours it took to edit all the beautiful music together. And I know just coming from me personally, I know I've, I've been in the band and I've played music ever since, um, first grade. And I poured over 10,000 hours into, into clarinet, bass clarinet, alto clarinet. And I just, these musicians are phenomenal. Like little, uh, little often do people know how much time, dedication, work, and effort goes into really perfecting music, uh, because they have to do so much. It's like, it's like more than you learning a language. You have to learn intonation, um, notes, acoustimities, dynamics, um, everything. And it can all just be affected by just one note. And my band director, back when I took the band, uh, she used to say, one wrong note within a piece can ruin the whole entire thing. So this is really a big community effort. And I cannot imagine how hard it was to sync up all those videos and keep in, in time, having to stay in rhythm. It's probably so hard. And I give all these kudos to these amazing students in instrumental music, choir, performative arts, they're really doing something amazing, and I cannot congratulate them enough.
Okay, again, thank you. I think as, uh, some of the old timers would say, if that doesn't light your fire, your wood must be wet, you know, so. Mr. Wilson, I'm going to turn it over to you and share a little bit about our arts program, please.
So yeah, I have the opportunity to, to share about the visual arts side of things this evening for a few minutes. Um, our visual art teachers have been working very hard as well, trying to be creative, figuring out how to continue their work with students, that is such a hands-on effort. Um, they've done an amazing job. A, a lot of the schools, um, throughout the year have been, you know, converting much of what would normally be physical in-person art shows and exhibits over to a virtual format. Um, and they've been doing that within their classes, within their schools, uh, kind of school-based and, and school-community types of events. Tonight, we'd like to recognize, uh, some more state-level opportunities that our, our teachers and their students in particular have had to do. So each year, uh, the MSD partners with First Lady Yumi Hogan to host, um, a bi-annual event, the First Lady's Gallery Exhibit. And each county has the opportunity to, uh, kind of submit two artworks to represent their school system. So we're going to get a chance to see the two artworks from the fall, as well as the two artworks from the spring. In the fall, Bentley Hobbs, a second grader at Smithsburg Elementary School, was able to enter this piece into the First Lady Gallery Exhibit, and it's titled Together. And then Samaya King from South Hagerstown High School, a 10th grader, was able to submit this artwork in, titled Imagine. Again, those were the fall exhibit pieces, and they were honored in a virtual event on October 9th. Now, more recently, the spring edition of the First Lady Gallery's Exhibit, from Clear Spring High School, a, a senior, Kylie McKendrick, was able to enter this piece in. This photograph is titled Without Black, There Is No Color. And then from Emma K. Dabb Elementary School, L. Roland, a fifth grader, and this piece is titled The Rainbow Scout. Now, these pieces will actually be, uh, recognized in a virtual event, I believe tomorrow evening, March 17th. Um, so it's, it's exciting for the students and teachers and others to be involved in those events and get to share their artwork in that way. Also, there is a, an annual event each year that, that kind of begins in, in late fall, the Together We're Better Inclusive Education Awareness Campaign. It has a, a variety of different aspects to it, and, and all about trying to make sure that all students, including those with disabilities, feel valued and, and understood, that, that their learning can be completely successful in our learning environments. And there's an art component to that, an art contest, uh, for elementary, middle, and high. So Paramount Elementary School, there was a number of entries from, from their school, and very fortunately, we actually had three artworks from Paramount. They were, they were chosen as winners for this statewide contest. The first one received first place, Kira Archie, for her work that's up there. She's a first grader, and you can see her and her work on screen there. The, the theme for, um, this year's Together We're Better Contest was the Time for Inclusion Is Now. That was the theme for this year's event. We have, then we have a fifth grader, Brielle Mirakku Babu. She is a fifth grader, also from Paramount Elementary, and she placed third. Third place. I believe it says second place up there, but on the screen, but it was actually a third-place winning piece for Brielle. And then Joshua Charway, a first grader, received an honorable mention for the Together We're Better Art Contest. And then each year as well, the Maryland Art Education Association gives, uh, counties across the state of Maryland opportunity to, to nominate art teachers in a couple of different categories, uh, and to be recognized. So for this year, in our career category, which is five-plus years of, of teaching art in the county, we have three representatives. We have Sarah Minnick, she's currently in her 18th year teaching at Fountaindale Elementary School. We have Lily Clay, in her 14th year, currently at Boonsborough Middle School. And Anthony Bonnetz, in his 12th year at South Hagerstown High School. Another category for this is what they call the novice category, so less than five years of teaching experience. And for this, we have Haley Lawson, in her fourth year, who teaches at Hancock Elementary School and Pangborn Elementary School. These teachers will be honored at a more formal event with the MAEA, uh, moving forward in 2021, this year, uh, at some point during the summer, when they're able to make that happen. So it's also worth mentioning too, that, um, currently we have an elementary visual arts festival, a virtual event online that we just finished up. It has representation from every elementary school in the county. Um, that's, that is, that's either currently available, or we pushed out very soon through different communication outlets here within the system. Um, so you may have already seen that online, it's just, it's a great show. And it's a little bit of a, um, kind of like a, a, a highlight specifically of elementary, but it's kind of leading into, um, our, our great large museum show with the Washington County Museum of Fine Art that we will again have, uh, coming up in May. Again, that will be a virtual online exhibit this year like it was last spring. So our teachers and students are already busy right now assembling that for a virtual event. But we are working towards trying to have some level of, of an in-person component to that show as well, with having the, the winning museum pieces. Um, and, and the Trilogy High School Art Competition will be coupled with that museum show event this year as well. And so the finalists for the Trilogy Artwork, uh, competition would be, um, hopefully represent in-person at the museum as well. So not necessarily all the artworks that are submitted, but the, the winning pieces and the finalists for Trilogy, um, in an in-person opportunity at the museum. So visual art continues to, to move on this year, and it's, it's been a, a great and creative year, and thank you for the opportunity to share tonight.
But I think we want to congratulate our students and our teachers as well in the arts. Okay, thank you, gentlemen. Okay, a couple of other announcements. Uh, I do want to congratulate Penny Smith, uh, counselor at Eastern Elementary School. Uh, she was named a semifinalist for Maryland Elementary School Council of the Year and was recognized for that. So we're very proud of her and our counseling program, so congratulations to her and the impact, uh, that she has on Eastern Elementary School. We'll be sharing a return to learn update, um, most likely on Thursday. It'll include our spring sports schedule, some information, uh, about spring sports. We're going to continue to have, uh, inter-county play. For right now, it'll kind of have some guidelines regarding spectators and those types of things in this smore. And everything will follow the governor's orders, uh, as well as providing our students the opportunity to play. I was very pleased as we wrapped up the season on Saturday with a wrestling event. At Williamsport High School was our last event for winter sports. Again, we were one of three school systems that offered winter sports at all, and we made it through the entire three-week season, uh, with only a couple quarantine teams. And we were pleased. And I think while people were concerned about it only being such a short season, getting the opportunity to play rivals, it seemed like every game was a rival, a rival game to me. I had the opportunity to attend at least one boys' game and girls' game home for each school, so, um, the opportunity to do that. Attended a couple of track meets, I didn't make them to all the track meets and most of the wrestling matches. Again, I think our students were just grateful to play. Uh, so we're anxious to see, our teams are practicing right now. We're still getting, uh, some numbers out for some of those teams that don't have full squads yet, so if your child hasn't, uh, you know, participated yet, we're kind of coming down to the end of, uh, selecting teams for spring, so make sure that they take advantage of that opportunity. Want to make the board aware, we anticipate a governor visit on March 25th. According to his schedule, he's visiting the mass vaccination site on March 25th. I think that's when it opens, the old Wolf Furniture Store is what I understand it to be. And we're going to invite him across the street to Tech High. And we have a visit laid out for him there, bio-med and advanced manufacturing engineering, or cybersecurity, artificial intelligence programs, cloud computing. And we also want to show him our new space for our diesel mechanic, autonomous cars, alternative energy vehicle repair, and those types of things that are coming up here in the very near future that we're building up some excitement around. On March 10th, I think I shared with the board and updates, we had just an outstanding roundtable discussion. Cody Pine, Rodney Gaiman, Steve Garland had invited their diesel mechanic community in. So we had mechanics, we had shop foremen, we had owners of shops, dealers at Tech High. They were sharing their ideas. They were not bashful at all of sharing the types of equipment that we need, the type of space that we need, what the industry is looking for, what type of employee needs to come into that industry. And all that is helping us shape our educational specification for our new programs. I hope that that comes forward to our facilities team in the next couple of weeks. And then we're going to put out for an architect for the design of this project, and they'll be able to start putting together maybe a graphic for us to be able to see how this program is going to unfold here at Washington County Technical High School. So I'm really excited about this. That program is going to open up for the fall of '22. So design work will start in the coming months, hopefully get it out to bid by winter break, and by this time next year be under construction and completed through the summer. And we have a lot of community support behind this. So that's an area we're also taking the governor in, just to help him visualize that. And our cross-section here of 8170, huge trucking, diesel, also includes light, earthwork, equipment, all those types of things will be part of its hydraulics and everything else. So just an excellent meeting. I thank the business community for coming in and joining us. And the last piece that I have for tonight, we want to highlight a couple things that we have new here in the county in the coming weeks, the various boards meetings. So tonight, I call it a cadaver table because I never can get this word out quite right. Staff just keeps laughing at me. But we have a table that has four people have donated their body to science. Their body was sliced into millimeter sections and designed electronically into this board. In addition to that, so you'll be able to see, these are live people died of various illnesses. The kids can even diagnose what happened with it. I think the video is going to speak for itself, so I'll probably just be quiet. But I am very excited. In Washington County, we have this tool. I was at Tech High today, and our cybersecurity people were up checking out this table. The kids were demonstrating it for our cybersecurity students, I think just from the technology end. It's just so cool. The University of Maryland, the Physician Assistance Program has one of these tables three years ago when they opened up, or whenever that time period was. I was there at the ribbon cutting, and they were celebrating this table as like one of a kind here anywhere near in the area. And we have one here in Washington County High School. And the video will speak for itself. With that, that'll conclude my comments for tonight. Thank you. So roll the video, please.
The anatomage table is the most exciting piece of equipment I've had as a career and technology educator.
I wish I had my own. I would play with this all the time.
We get to learn a lot of things that other students aren't able to, and I'm thankful for it.
It's bringing to life really what we're studying, taking things from off the textbook page and making them real. Students typically would have to wait until med school to take a course in gross anatomy, where they would be learning from a donated cadaver, somebody who donated their body to science. With this table, one of the key features is there are four individuals who donated their bodies. The bodies were frozen, and then they were sliced in millimeter-thick slices, photographed with high resolution. And then those images were put together to create animations where we can peel apart layers, we can dissect certain areas, we can cut apart areas. The other fascinating part of that is each of the four people had a different cause of death. So the students get to follow an autopsy protocol to try and discover what was the issue involved with this particular person. We can practice surgical techniques on them, we can isolate particular body systems. Then it has this vast library of thousands of histology images to look at both normal cells and tissues and pathological cells and tissues. It really puts literally at my students' fingers a vast database of gross anatomy, histology, case histories. They are very excited about it. At first, they were very tentative. You know, they were very shy about touching it and very shy about interacting with it. They felt a little uncomfortable at first, but once they started to dive in, they want to be sure that we're scheduling time to work with it every day. And the nice thing is we can blend it into every single aspect of what we're doing.
I want to be a physician of some kind. I'm not sure what I'd specialize in yet. I really like anatomy and biology, and I want to work with patients one-on-one.
For career plans, I want to be a surgeon of some sort. I'm not sure exactly which one yet. I was originally looking at neurosurgeons. It's really cool to be able to go around and look at different parts, especially if I want to be a neurosurgeon, I can look at the brain and look at all of these sections of the brain.
It's been really helpful with finding out where exactly things are in the body and being able to identify diseases. You have the histology of any part, like right there on the screen. It's awesome.
It is hard to overstate how innovative this technology is and what it brings to our learning experience. It really is an innovative CTE tool that's helping prepare my students for college and career. Most of them are heading on to study science, medicine, nursing in college, and they're getting this opportunity that admittedly they very, very likely would not see until postgraduate work.
It's just a really amazing experience, especially if you want to have like a hands-on experience with science.
It's pretty extraordinary, and it's hard to encapsulate how that feels, other than that we are incredibly grateful, and we're going to be using it every single day.
We've come a long way from dissecting frog.
We have. We have.
Thank you, Dr. Michael.
Thank you.
We'll move to personnel action. We have several appeals to vote on the decision. So we'll start with number one, the consideration and vote on the decision of the Board of Education of Washington County. This would be 2021-101. Mrs. Baker?
Yes, good evening, Mrs. Williams, Dr. Michael, and board members. I'm requesting the Board of Education's consideration and vote on decision of the Board of Education of Washington County, 2021-001.
Thank you, Mrs. Baker. Is there a motion?
President Williams, I move to adopt decision of the Board of Education of Washington County, 2021-001.
Thank you, Mrs. Murray. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Bickford. Any questions? Any discussion? Okay, we'll move to the vote. All those in favor? Okay, we have seven affirmative votes. Motion carries.
I am requesting the Board of Education's consideration and vote on decision of the Board of Education of Washington County, 2021-002.
Thank you, Mrs. Baker. Is there a motion?
Madam President, I move to adopt decision of the Board of Education of Washington County, 2021-002.
Thank you, Mr. Bickford. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Murray. Any questions for Mrs. Baker? Any discussion? We'll move to the vote. All those in favor? Okay, we have seven affirmative votes. Motion carries unanimously. Mrs. Baker?
I am requesting the Board of Education's consideration and vote on decision of Board of Education of Washington County, 2021-003.
Thank you, Mrs. Baker. Is there a motion?
President Williams, I move to adopt decision of the Board of Education of Washington County, 2021-003.
Thank you. Mrs. Murray? Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Bickford. Any questions for Mrs. Baker? Any discussion? Okay, we'll move to the vote. All those in favor of the motion? Okay, thank you. We have seven affirmative votes. Thank you, Mrs. Baker.
Thank you.
Motion carries. Mr. Bickford, that was your second, was it not?
Yes.
Thank you. All right, we'll move to Dr. Pugh, our Associate Superintendent for Administration and Leadership with this evening's Personnel Actions. Dr. Pugh?
Good evening. As discussed earlier in closed session, there are several staff changes for your review. There are two considerations before you this evening. At this time, I ask for your approval of today's Personnel Actions.
Thank you, Dr. Pugh. Is there a motion?
President Williams, I move for the approval of Personnel Actions discussed earlier today.
Thank you, Mrs. Murray. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Zentmeyer. Any questions? Any discussion? Okay, we'll move to the vote, voting to approve the Personnel Action as discussed earlier this afternoon. Thank you. We have seven affirmative votes. Motion carries. Dr. Pugh?
Thank you. At this time, I ask for your approval of the addendum of today's Personnel Actions.
Thank you, Dr. Pugh. Is there a motion?
President Williams, I move for the approval of the addendum to Personnel Actions discussed earlier today.
Thank you, Mrs. Murray. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Stauffer. Any discussions? Any questions for Dr. Pugh? Okay, we'll move to the vote. All those in favor? Okay, those in opposition? Okay, thank you. We have five affirmative votes and two in opposition. Motion carries. Thank you, Dr. Pugh. At this time, we'll move to reports to the board, Board Member Committee Reports. We'll start with Curriculum Instruction. Dr. Zentmeyer?
The Curriculum and Instruction Committee met yesterday to review curriculum resource and selection process, Great Books Library, pre-AP English resources, and active learning program. We discussed the blended learning program as well and received an update on the testing cancellations for this spring. Our next meeting's April 19th, 3:00 p.m. here.
Thank you, Dr. Zentmeyer. Facilities Committee, Mr. Gessford?
Nothing to report at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Gessford. Finance Committee, Mr. Evans?
Also nothing to report at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Evans. Human Resources, Mrs. Murray?
Yes, we will be meeting on April 13th at 4:00 p.m. here at the CES.
Thank you, Mrs. Murray. Mr. Bickford, Policy Review and Development Committee.
Policy and Review meets next Tuesday, March 23rd, at 1:00 p.m. I'm looking on my calendar, and I have a Zoom link. Is it, we're planning to do it virtually? So we'll do it virtually next week.
Yes. Thank you. And Mr. Stauffer, did you have anything that you wanted to speak about legislative?
I have no report, but I did send to each board member and others everything that we get, so you can read the status of the bills and everything. And Mrs. Cade will have a much fuller report when she comes. I guess she'll, I think she's here at the next meeting and so forth. So some of the bills are moving forward that are a little controversial, others are not moving, and it's just really too much. I mean, I could give you a report, but it would take a half an hour, so.
Thank you for not doing that. On behalf of my colleagues, thank you. On behalf of my colleagues, thank you for your report. Mr. Bakum, anything from student government?
Madam President, no updates of this moment. Thank you.
Thank you. Under miscellaneous business, future agenda items. You should have a future agenda items list in your packet of materials. On April 6th, we have a legislative briefing. On April 20th, we have a Facilities and Enrollment Advisory Committee Report, and another legislative briefing on May 4th. If you have something that you would like to have appear on the agenda, please let a member of the Agenda Planning Committee know. That committee did not meet today, but we will be meeting prior to our next board closed session. It's April 6th, I believe. And anything that needs to be on the April 6th agenda, we will take care of via email, so.
Mrs. Williams, I have a question. I asked for a report on the website for the Washington County Public Schools, and I think that was about two months ago. I just wonder where we are on that.
Okay, I don't have my 12-month calendar here in front of me, but I will follow up and get back to you with that.
I think Ms. Anderson gave a brief verbal report of what our intention was with the website. I think with COVID and the pace that we're going right now, we're just having difficulty getting to the point that we can put out an RFP and get that up and running to enhance our website. But I certainly can follow Ms. Anderson, and we can give you a status report on that.
If there's something more specific, Mr. Gessford, that you wanted to see reported on, if you would just send me an email, please? Thank you. All right, that's it for future agenda items, and we'll move to Board Member Comments. Mr. Bakum, would you like to begin over there?
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. I have Board Member Comments today. I just want to take a moment to highlight the successful winter season we had, given with COVID restrictions. I know I saw some wonderful students engaging in some nice, active physical exercise after being around the computer, having sports for a while. So it's great to see students participating in athletics. I also want to give congratulations to the often-forgotten North Stars of Washington County. They are our only ice hockey team within the whole county, it's a collaborative team from each of the different schools within the county, and they play at the Hagerstown Ice Rink. And they made it all the way, almost got to the semifinals, but lost 3 to 4 with only 11 seconds on time. So I know they're often forgotten, just want to highlight ice hockey and how wonderful season they have.
Thank you. Mrs. Murray?
I have nothing this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Murray. Dr. Zentmeyer?
Well, you know I do. April 1st is not only April Fool's Day, but it's the beginning of Major League Baseball. Now, how does a matter hit this? It can travel 60 feet in .43 seconds, but the retina takes one-fifth of a second to register it. And by that time, the ball is halfway to the plate. Hmm. And that doesn't even count curveballs or high insides. It takes timing and vision. And that's what our team did on Monday when we went back to regular bell schedule. I can't say thank you enough to those people who stepped up to the plate and hit the ball out of the park. Thank you. And finally, my history part, because my cohort in crime over there is a history major. In 402 A.D., a 16-year-old was kidnapped and taken to Ireland and made a slave. He returned as a missionary to the same people who enslaved him. What a lesson of grace and forgiveness and a purposeful life. So to everybody, Happy St. Patrick's Day tomorrow.
Thank you, Dr. Zentmeyer. Mr. Stauffer?
Okay, I won't take too long. I've got a couple comments. One is, tonight's vote on Mr. Gessford's motion was a tough vote for me. And I can tell you unequivocally, if we were voting on that motion in August, my vote would have been to absolutely return to school, because as I see it, there is no way I'm ever going to vote to start back virtually come August. We need to get back to school as normal as possible. So why did I vote the way I did tonight? Well, several things. I had just had enough reasonable doubt in my mind that we were going I had just had enough reasonable doubt in my mind that we were going, that it was the right vote for me to make. One was the fact that I don't like to override the superintendent. If you recall earlier in the year when we were on full virtual, I abstained because I was caught off guard when we voted to have the teachers teach from home. This was back in September or August, I don't know when it was. And I was caught off guard because I just don't like to interfere in school operations and so forth. The other thing that I didn't hear tonight was I worry about large schools when he said about 17, 18 kids in a classroom. Some schools can accommodate that, but I just wonder about a teacher that gets a class schedule of 25. It probably could be worked out, but what do you do? You've got seven kids and if you're going to maintain social distance, I don't know. And again, with all due respect to Mr. Evans and Mr. Gesford, I've read all those things about suicide and all that and the mental health of students and I worry about that. I really do. My wife and I had a seven-year-old several days. We don't get her as often now because she's on a AB schedule, but we had her at our house because her mother works, my stepdaughter, and we had her for school. And there were days when it was very trying to keep that young lady focused and so forth. But I just, I just had enough reasonable doubt in my mind that I had to vote the way I did. I probably pleased some people, I probably ticked some others off. So be it, that's the way it goes. On another thought, if some people out there don't want to get, haven't gotten their shots yet, get the vaccine. In a few months, I'll celebrate three-quarters of a century. I got both shots and had no after-effects whatsoever. I think it would help immensely if people do get vaccinated, it would help get us back into school on a much more normal basis. I for one didn't like it when this board met virtually. I hate virtual meetings, as everybody on this board knows, but I, you know, when the board voted to meet virtually, I had no choice. On another note, like a lot of board members, we've been getting a lot of emails about closures of schools. I speak for myself tonight, but I can tell you that I personally have made no decision on closing schools whatsoever. It's under FEAC. I will wait to hear what they say. I'll have a lot of questions for the FEAC report, whatever it may be or anything, but I will tell you this, and I'm probably going to tick some people off when I say this, but please contact the county commissioners and lobby for funding of our budget. We need our budget, our general operating fund, which we get from the county, funded. It needs to be done. So please get out there and do that. I just find it very difficult, maybe I shouldn't say this, but I'm not very politically correct, but I find it very difficult and the guy sitting on the county commissioners, several of them, you know, I'm friends with them and so forth, and I respect the job they do. But when you can't fund our budget and yet you show up in Hancock advocating for the school to be saved, it's kind of a, kind of a, now I won't say what I'm going to say. It's just amazing to me that that takes place. So I hope, you know, this board, I have all the faith that this board will do what is in the best interest of all the children at the schools being examined. I have no doubt in my mind that that's the way it's going to be and we'll wait to FEAC and FEAC does not make my decision for me. I make my decision. So I just want that understood, speaking for myself personally. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stauffer. Mr. Bigford?
Very well said, Stan. And I just wanted to thank Mr. Gesford and Mr. Evans. That was a really good discussion tonight and I think you brought it forward with your motion. I think sometimes we need to have those healthy discussions so that the public sees that these aren't easy decisions, where we are all making decisions based on the fact that we care very deeply about students and staff. So I just wanted to sort of give kudos to everybody for a good, healthy discussion out in public and that's all I have. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Bigford. Mr. Gesford?
I've talked enough tonight, so I'm going to pass.
Thank you, Mr. Gesford. Mr. Evans?
Well, I was going to say something different, but Dr. Zentmeyer's analogy, I'm, as a big baseball junkie, I appreciated it and I recently came across a very old video of Jenny Finch striking out Albert Pujols. And I have always said that people, while people say that baseball is the hardest thing to do, hitting baseball is the hardest thing to do in all sports, I always disagreed and said it was softball. I don't know how they do that. The things they can do with that ball is ridiculous and so, that's all I have.
Thank you. There's nothing further? We'll stand adjourned. Thank you.
Thanks.